Good morning and welcome to the Pauling Board of Commissioners November 10th Work Session. We'll welcome all of our guests and elected officials. Looking around the room, I see City Council from Hyrum, Captain Carter.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other elected officials in the room? Thank you all for being here. I'll remind you to turn off cell phones, next panels, phasers, electronic devices, or whatever makes a racket. Children are accepted. Marshall, will you bring the sign in? Each year on November the 10th, we recognize as the Marine Birthday. This year is the 241st anniversary of the Marines. So, we'd like to make sure that we honor them. I want to let you know that the flags are flying at half-mast. We had the loss of Deputy Darrell Smallwood and Sergeant Patrick Sundren with the Peach County Sheriff's Office. Terrible situation where both men were killed in the line of duty. So, when you see our flags, they're flying at half-mast. Tomorrow, I'll be putting out a little information on Veterans Day. So, it's one of those days where today, we have the birthday of the Marines, and tomorrow, we honor Veterans Day. So, with that being said, we have Deborah Opie, Director of Outreach and InReach at Oasis Family Church. Would you bring forth our invitation and our pledge? And would you stand with me if you're able? You've got a great hat, by the way.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we pray. Father God, we come to you this morning thanking you for who you are. We thank you for your mercy and your grace and your love and your kindness towards us. God, as we get around the issues and the things that concern this county, we pray that you would give us wisdom, that you would open up our understanding and give us an ear to hear what your Spirit has to say about this county and about the decisions that we are about to make. God, we pray that we will walk in your favor and, God, that you will open doors for this county. We give you glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you. Let's keep our outgoing president, President Trump, in our prayers and our incoming president, Donald Trump, in our prayers. We've got a lot of good to do in this United States. Minutes October 25th, 2016 Work Session Minutes and October 25th, 2016 Board of Elegance are available for year-repeal. It is my pleasure to be able to let this young man grow up over the years and years. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Sergeant Mike Willingham with the Pauling County Sheriff's Office. And we have Lieutenant Colonel Chad Putton going to say a few things. So, Mike, will you and your family please come forward? Everybody come on up some more. Mike, you've got some terrible things you want to say about him. Guys, come on together and close eyes. Get your down here number. You've got them shorter and shorter. Chad, if you can get it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Trump. I will read the nomination letter that Sergeant Willingham, Director of Supervisory, Captain Rich submitted on his behalf. Says, "Dear Sergeant, I wish to nominate Sergeant Mike Willingham. Sergeant Willingham has been faithful and dedicated employee for 24 years. In his most current role as Motor Services Sergeant, Sergeant Willingham has worked diligently over the years to increase the efficiency of the Sheriff's Office vehicles and keep the vehicles equipped and in proper working order. He has been instrumental in getting the video cameras and computers and the patrol cars to help assist officers, deputies during their daily assignments. Sergeant Willingham is an employee that comes to work with a smile on his face and always tries to put a positive spin on every situation. He works daily without complaint and is always willing to help others. Sergeant Willingham's day is not a normal eight-to-five day because the majority of his lunch hours are spent on the phone dealing with issues with the vehicles and/or equipment, and he makes himself available after hours for issues that may arise. Although Sergeant Willingham is not a deputy on the road, he is still instrumental key to the daily functions of the Sheriff's Office. He's very good at his job and deserves to be recognized for his hard work. Thank you for your consideration, Captain Karen Rich." And Sergeant Willingham, you do an outstanding job. Me and you have had to work side-by-side for about two and a half years now, and you've helped me out tremendously as well, and you're well-deserved, and it's an honor to recognize you. So, I apologize that the Sheriff's not here, but he had another meeting to be at this morning. We've got a new commander with the Drug Task Force, and they were having a meeting. So, I know I don't do as good as him, but we're proud of you, and we're good to do it with that, and we appreciate you, brother. Thank you. And thank you.
People usually want to carry me, Mike. I've just thrown that in there. Mike, people usually want to carry me. Mike, you can carry a thing.
Thank you.
That was your word. I remember you when you was great at the mall.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Department of Family and Children's Services National Adoption Month Proclamation to Sandy Howell, Foster and Adoption Parent. If you'll come forward and anybody with you, it'd be great. I've got a proclamation to read. Hey there, you want my seat? She does. My blessing, I'll give you the keys, I'm not going to stop. Department of Family and Children's Services National Adoption Month. Whereas November is National Adoption Month, the Georgia Division of Family and Children's Services, DFACS, is actively looking for adopted families for over 300 children in its statewide care. Whereas adopted parents provide permanent families for children in the custody of DFACS, adoption is a social and legal process and creates a new family, giving adopted children the same rights and benefits as those born into the family. You do not have to be married to adopt a child. Many single people, male and female, adopt children through DFACS. For a child to be available for adoption, their parents, their birth parents have to voluntarily surrender their parental rights or to have their rights terminated by juvenile court system due to abuse, neglect, or abandonment. And whereas there is a great need for adopted families for sibling groups and teenagers, siblings represent about 20% of children eligible for adoption. Separating siblings can be an emotional burden and traumatic for the child as they often depend on each other for support. 69% of children in need of an adopted home are teenagers. We want to bring attention to the need for homes for teens as they do not get adopted as quickly as younger children. Some children stay in DFACS care for years without ever being adopted. And whereas it is important to note that DFACS is not an adoption agency but a child welfare agency, this means that DFACS does not find children for families but families for children. For more information about adoption process and see the children looking for adopted families, visit www.it'smyturnnow.dhs.ga.gov, and that will appear on our screen, or you can call 877-210-KIDS to get more information. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as National Adoption Month in Pauling County and encourage all citizens to recognize the need for adopted families. Would you stand with me if we recognize them? God, I just want to say something. They, nobody wanted to speak, so I'd just like to thank all the adopted families out there that do adoption for what you do. And y'all know Julie and I did that several years back, and it's definitely a calling. It's not for everybody, and I understand that through recent tough times, but it's very rewarding. And the two boys that I adopted kind of let me know that each and every day. It's a rewarding time, so if there are any families out there that want to get into that, check with DFACS. They just gave you the information. But it's much needed throughout our state. Foster families are needed throughout our county, throughout our state, and it's National Adoption Month, and there are kids available for adoption that are looking for families. And it's amazing to see how much love these kids will give your family when you go to, when you go to do this, and how much a part of your family that they will be. And there's times that they're tough with Julie and I with the two boys that we adopted, so I won't sit up here and lie about that. There's tough times, but there's a lot of blessings that are out there on it. And so, for my two boys, Darren and Kevin, I love you. Thank you. There are no invited guests. Bit Awards, the Disactions Award, E911 Consoles, to the parent mode better dispatch products, and the amount not to exceed $135,000. That was a call of our finance director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On October 28th, we received proposals for DFACS work stations. These will be the stations that the 911 operators occupy while they're there for each of the 12-hour shifts. So, there are several things that 911 wanted to look for in those specifics. Say that they would be comfortable, they would be useful, and they would be laid out in a way that would be accommodating to their task for the day. I think Dave Mumford has some pictures for you in his presentation in a few moments. But we had three participants. These participants are not from Georgia. Every one of them are from across the state. So, we had Zabix Systems, which was from Colorado, Watson Dispatch, which was from Washington, Dispatch Products, which was from Indiana. This was done in a RFP, so as I mentioned, so that we could get what would work, best work for, excuse me, be best suited for our operators as well as cost. Fortunately, we have, it looks like we will be able to go with the lowest cost, and it suits our dispatchers for what they need. So, this particular one, we're asking you to award $135,000 for these units, and this will allow them. It's about $10,000 less than the second bid, and it's from Dispatch Products out of Indiana.
We say consoles, how many were drawn in?
Um, I don't know if they can tell you that. I'm not certain. I don't remember.
There's 13 positions total. 13 total positions in the new 911 center. We have eight positions now, and we're moving to 13. And with the layout and with this company, the future expansion is up to 26 positions as we grow. And one of the requirements of the RFP was for them to show us how they could accommodate us in the future as our needs grow, and they can accommodate up to 26 positions in their new console there.
Y'all have any questions of Dave or Tabitha?
This one, $135,000, what does that include, all of them?
That's everything in the dispatch floor. I'll show you some photographs. That's all 13 positions, but it's just the consoles. And I've got a picture of what a console looks like at the end of my presentation, but I can explain what you, what we're actually getting for that money.
So, you've got nine active positions now and we're going to 13.
We have eight. Eight active positions, and we're moving to 13.
Okay. Any other questions? You can just stay there because you're going to be next. Thank you, Tabitha. Reports from committees and departments, David Mumford, 911 Director for that.
And I'm just going to give you a quick update of our building progress, and then at the end of that, I have the consoles that we can discuss. This is just, you seen that before, that's our rendering of what the exterior of the building will look like, other than the fact that we've chosen some darker colored brick. That's, we're on track for it to be, it's our status right now. All the utilities are either installed or nearing completion. Greystone has found some rock underneath the ground, so we know where all the rock that was on-site came from. It came from the DFACS site, and so they're having to tunnel through that. The HVAC units are installed and in place on top of the building. This building is designed with an N+1, which is need plus one, and so we have a backup HVAC unit that will take over if any of the other HVAC units should fail, something that we don't have now. We've suffered through a few summers of losing heat, or losing air conditioning for two or three days at a time. This system has backups in place, so that is a national requirement for our new 911 centers. The interior walls are framed, and the sheet rock is being installed. It's probably 80% complete at this point, the interior walls. The exterior is nearing completion. It's probably 90 to 95% done. The remaining concrete pads for the generators, the curb, the other concrete, like the pad for the radio tower, are expected to be poured in the next two weeks. The parking lot paving is expected to do the first two weeks of December. We can't pave the parking lot until we get the curb and all the heavy equipment brought in because it has a curb, and so it's going to take several weeks for the asphalt to be ready for us to drive on it. All the heavy deliveries have to be done before we can pave. Right now, we're working with our vendors on a transition plan. We had a meeting with our major vendors a couple of weeks ago, and we're working on a transition plan that should be invisible to the public, and that way, we will make a smooth transition. It's not, we can't shut down the 911 center for a couple of days and then open it back up. So, we have to, we have to have one up and running while we bring the other one up, so we're working on that plan now. The project is actually on schedule, if not slightly ahead of schedule. As much as we need rain, they have not had any reason to not work, so they've been working even on Saturdays, and so we're actually quite a bit ahead of schedule, but on paper, we're still holding to the first quarter of 2017 until we get, there's a few things that are outstanding, so they're not going to adjust the schedule we have to make sure we've got the class and other stuff that we haven't ordered. And the one big thing that everybody is concerned about, we are under budget. We remain under budget. Cooper, the C mark of this project, Cooper and Company, have done an outstanding job of keeping us under budget. And granted, we're not, we're about probably $20,000 under budget right now, which is for a project this size, and considering some of the changes we had to make, it's pretty good. We've had to make some electrical changes to suit our vendors' needs that we thought we had accommodated, and then we come to find out later that because of the consoles and such, we had to make a few adjustments. We had some VE options in the building, and so we eliminated some of those options. They were value engineering, changing some of the flooring, put money back into the budget, and we planned on that from the very beginning, to have these options that will give us the flexibility to move funds to a higher priority part of the building, whether it be electrical or the IT portion or whatever. So, we did include some VE options, and we've used a few of those. Hopefully, when we get toward them, we can add some of them back in if needed.
Being under budget, Scott has asked me if he could have any of your leftover.
Well, Scott has been an extremely helpful to us on this project. Can't give him any money, but this is definitely, probably all the projects.
Did you give him a t-shirt or something?
Yeah. Of all the projects that I've worked within with the county for the last 12 years, this is probably one of the most team-oriented projects, and you wouldn't think that because it's dedicated 911, but there's every facet of the county they've pitched in to help, whether it's DOT has helped us a lot, and Community Development has worked with us, and IT has worked with us, and so we actually, it's a group project to make this thing happen. So, this is where we started. You've seen some of these pictures. That's where the foundation was several months ago. And then the framework started going up, and this is where we were probably about a month and a half, and they had started doing the exterior, and this is where we are now. Actually, we're a little bit further along than that, but the exterior is almost 90% complete. The wall that you're seeing, that solid brick wall that's facing the drive, that, inside that wall is where the Communications Center and the Emergency Operations Center are located. They're on each end of the building with our server rooms in between and the corridor that connects the two, but that's the, that's the operation side of the building. That's the front entrance there. The brick is now probably about 50% higher up on that wall. They've been, they've been working on the brick pretty quickly. This is the reception area, just a few shots of the interior. With this building, we actually are able to keep our personnel separate from the public, which we don't, we don't have that luxury now, so when we bring people in for testing, until we've done their background investigation and such for new Hyrum employees, they don't have access to the security areas of the 911 center. Now, we have to bring them into the room to test. People that come in for open records, they have direct access, and so this lets us keep our personnel secure and to keep the public until they're ready, you know, until we're clear that we go into the security areas. This is the actual communications room. We went by yesterday for a meeting, and they actually have our clouds installed. We have floating clouds up in the ceiling that have LED lights that actually shine up on the cloud and then diffuse the light down to the room, and that helps with, we work 12-hour shifts with computers, so this helps diffuse the light out so we don't have any hot spots in the room glaring down on any one position. But this is, the picture that you're looking at there, that's that wall that faces the road, where the path blue is on the side, and that's where the, our monitors, the telecom trail monitors, our radio equipment monitors, all of those will go along that wall, and so that everybody can see those without having to look in various areas of the room like we do now. And the doorway to the right or to the middle of the picture, that's the one that leads into the EOC. And that's another view of the communications room, you can get an idea of it, but if you've been in where we are now, this gives you an idea of the size of what we're moving to. The two doors that you're looking at there are the two offices, that's our section manager's offices, so our training manager and our operations manager have offices right off the dispatch floor, and the door in the center is the corridor, the secured corridor that leads into the dispatch room. And to the right, once again, that, on the right side is the front wall, and then that's the training room and conference room, and then on the left is our supervisor's office. We have a spot for our supervisor to actually take if they have to counsel an employee or they have people they can work on, they have an office that they can share, and with the other supervisors, we're going to do that now. This is the Emergency Operations Center. They are not quite as far along on that one as they are the comm room, but it's a similar size. The ceilings aren't quite as high, but the floor space is similar, and Chief Pelkery is not here, but this is his side of the building, that's the emergency management side, and he's going to have different type of furniture over there than what I'm going to show you shortly. And that's the main conference room of the building. It actually has a glass, will have a glass wall so that if we activate the EOC, we can bring folks in, and they can either be in the, be in the conference room and see what's going on in the EOC, and that way, we can work better between, we have a conference room that we can go immediately into off the Emergency Operations Center, but that's also the main one for the building. And this is what my folks want, that's their break room. That's the kitchen, which is probably four times the size we have now, and enough that we can support, if we operate, if we open the EOC, we can support the 30 or so people that report along with our employees. It'll be a full kitchen with all appliances, and we can actually stay there if we have to without leaving the building for five days or so. That's the goal. And that's just an interior view of one of the bunk rooms. We have three bunk rooms, which can sleep six people in those bunk rooms. If we have to do 24-hour operations and we can't get out without the weather, we're going to have the facilities to sleep there. And the next agenda item that you have, the furniture that's coming at the end, that furniture bid actually completes every office, all the break room, every, every office in there, that bid actually puts the furniture in. And this is the dispatch console we were discussing. This is the first bid award we've made. And these, these positions are, they're designed specifically for 911 centers. They're sit-to-sam positions, so they can go anywhere from about 18 inches off the floor to about, I think, 60 inches high, so you can stand up and work. If we were to hire someone who had a need of wheelchair access, they will be able to lower down to those positional values that meets ADA requirements. Their, the monitors are situated so that they're in a, it's called a focal, I forget what they actually call it, but it allows a focal link between the operator's eyes and the monitors to stay the same throughout the span of the console, and they can actually move those back and forth so that they can, if, they can keep them within a comfortable distance within 10 inches, the 10-inch radius, they can move those monitors back and forth. The, there's, there's a fan built into each one, and if you've never had to work in a 911 center, it cannot be comfortable for everybody, it's impossible. It doesn't matter, you know, we have a dedicated air conditioning unit for this now, but we have people who are either freezing or they're, or they're too hot. These consoles actually have built-in heat and air so that they can make their physician warmer or cooler if they, if they see fit. LED task lights are built into it. All the computers are situated on that right side so that we can pull a PC out and clean it without having to take an operator out of service. One of the reasons we like this particular company, the others, one of the other companies put them underneath the console, and that was unacceptable, but we needed to be able to pull them out and work on them without shutting the entire, the entire unit down. So, we have a pod of four, of four positions that'll make up one pod, and so there'll be four people working in a pod. We have three pods of four positions, and then we have one supervisor position, which is shown in the lower left-hand corner, and that will be set off to the side so the supervisor can see what's going on in the room. And that's, that's how we account for our 13 positions.
Sounds like this is going to be some great, let you pay us to work there.
It is, it's just, I can honestly say that we're moving into something that's state-of-the-art with, with the equipment that we already have, that we have recent upgrades that we've done, along with what's coming into the building, it's absolutely a state-of-the-art facility.
You brought in a lot of new stuff. You brought in phone systems and...
The phone system was recently upgraded, and we'll have one server at the new 911 center, one server is going to be here in IT. center, one server is going to be here in IT. And we have 50% capacity coming into this building with a T1 line that connects us to the new center and 50% capacity at the new 9-11 center. If we were to lose either one of those servers, we still have 50% of our 9-11 lines. If we lose our server now, we have to go to backup telephones. So this will allow us to maintain 50% of our capacity. If we have to abandon the 9-11 center, which we're, something I'll be briefly using on after the first year, we're planning a backup 9-11 center in this building. If we had to abandon that center and move up here, we would still get the same call, the same quality of information that we get, because we're going to have that geodiversity. And that was the recent upgrade that we did on the telephone system. We'll be looking for a new computer-aid dispatch system probably after the first of the year, and it will be a next-generation CAD system. We had one in the budget, we had some issues with that particular system, and we're not satisfied at this point to do what we want it to do. And so we will most likely go out for that, which means we won't be spending that money yet. We'll actually go out for a bid on probably a new system. The one thing that we refuse to do, the deputy directors in the back of the room, we discussed this many times, we refuse to put our folks with a piece of equipment that's not going to work, particularly if we can see ahead of time. I mean, you know, if it's something that's not working, then we don't need it. We need to be able to give them what they need to function properly.
Were you a close-knit group with your associations, so y'all all talk and you can find out what one does and doesn't work?
We do, and that was a large part of the system that we were looking at. This is, it works well under certain circumstances. We're not sure that it's suited for an agency our size. And we're, I mean, we're growing. And we have, the Sheriff Department has Bow Williams that connect our CAD system, and so we have to be able to support all of that.
Dave is very active down at the Capitol, working to improve 9-11 fees and those type of things will make you great leadership.
One of our bills passed, the fireworks, 9-11 gets about a percent or 2% of those funds, so that's a good business.
Tony, were you going to say something?
I was going to ask you, but those of y'all that have it, but I have a dinner room, a concrete block.
Right.
Tell them about that one.
It's a safe room. So that room is designed for, it's reinforced concrete block, and it's designed that if we have to leave the 9-11 center for any reason, if there's a tornado or whatever, we can move our personnel into the safe room until a storm passes. We have something similar where we are now, just not as large. But it is designed as an interior safe room that's designed to protect our personality if for some reason we suspect there's something that's going to happen. I mean, they could relocate to it in the event of an active shooter or anything like that, it's heavily reinforced. You see, the room is, when you walk in, you're like, okay, I see the rest of the building, what is that?
It stands out.
We also have a feature that we're kind of proud of, we actually were able to work on this, it's something that's becoming standard in 9-11 centers. It's not, there's not a lot in the avenue, but we have a quiet room that's built into the center. And what we're doing in that quiet room, we're providing a sofa and some chairs, and it's a place for, when a communicator's off to take a particularly bad call, and they have to go someplace to unwind, that's what that room is dedicated for. It's not a normal break room, it's for them to go in and try and cope with what they've just dealt with. And we do have those calls quite regularly, some of them make the news, and our folks deal with those people on the telephone and will often get there. So that's something that we decided to, if the budgets would allow, to build into this building, and has, we've been able to do that.
Thank you, Dave, you're a great reporter. Thank you, I appreciate you. Steve mentioned our EMA director, who's also our fire chief, Joey Pelfree. Joey is battling kidney stones today, so keep him in your prayers. If you've ever had a kidney stone, know what he's doing. We have Lieutenant Colonel Chad Button giving us the sheriff's update report. They have to say you're a lot better looking than a sheriff.
I'll talk about that. I am a lot shorter. Just a brief summary, y'all have the spreadsheets there that we keep track of everything with this system of 9-11. But on the very back, we have some highlighted areas. So far this year, January through October, the deputies have patrolled a little bit over 2.5 million miles. Total arrests for this year is 3,451 people. We have 6,366 traffic citations that have been issued so far this year. And we're going to start putting this in there, we haven't had it in there before, but from July through September, in the third quarter, our detention center booked in 1,078 individuals with a monthly average population of 213 defendants in custody. Our transport division from July, again, through September for the third quarter, had 2,784 transports. This includes to court, prison pickups, dropping off individuals at prison, any request to bring a defendant before one of our judges in our judicial circuit that are currently in prison, we have to go pick them up and bring them, and things of that nature, just to give you an idea. We had 57,779 complaints that were answered so far this year through the end of October. Some of the other high-volume calls that we've had, alarms, residential and commercial, 4,920 alarms so far this year, domestic disputes, 2,622. We've had 1,586 lockouts. This is when folks lock their keys in their car, things of that nature, happens quite often. And, you know, if they, if they call a locksmith, it's pretty much a hundred-dollar bill when they show up, so it's just another service that we try to provide to the, to the community. Subpoenas and civil papers that were served so far this year, 5,371. Suspicious incidents of persons or vehicles, as far as contacts, 4,621. Theft by taking burglary and enter-and-out of cases, 2,356. Traffic stop totals, 10,289. And the reason that's going to be different from the citations is the deputies don't have to issue a citation every time they pull somebody over, so that's going to include the warnings that we give. We've had 278 DUIs. We've had 3,004 warrants cleared so far this year. We've had 609 zone control requests, and 1,318 juvenile incident reports. 407 of them were assigned with 548 being charged. And that's going, the reason those numbers will be different is, you know, they may have more than one charge in a case, so it won't be one per one. If y'all have any questions, I'd be more glad to try to answer them.
Mr. D, you want to explain that huge grin you've been carrying on your face since Tuesday night?
No. Sir, I don't know if I'd call it a grin, it's just going to be a tough job. We are very gracious and thankful for the citizens voting, the bond refereeing amendment for the new detention facility, and the sheriff's office wearing dire deed of it. The, I think one of the biggest things that me and the sheriff have talked about, that we're really excited about, is bringing everybody back under one roof again, because we're so spread out. And, you know, getting everybody back together again, I think is going to be good for morale, it's going to be good for management and supervision of our staff. You know, and a lot of folks say, you know, why do you need a new jail for inmates? And, you know, a lot of it is not for them, you know? We do have to meet federal and state guidelines as far as housing goes, but also the men and women that work in that detention facility. I've often said that, you know, they're locked up for 12 hours at a time. And, you know, the only difference is they get to go home at the end of the shift. And so having a good working environment, again, will be good for morale for our detention officers and our deputies that are assigned to that facility. So it's going to be a tough project, but I think it's going to be a good project for the county, and it's going to last us for many, many years, so.
I think the sheriff said we're way over 15 years past the useful life of our current facility.
Yes, sir. The detention facility was opened in 1990, January of 1990, and it was designed for 10 years, and we've surpassed that. You know, we're at 16 years now, so it's 26 years old, so.
I'd like to thank this board commissioner for putting that valid question out there and allowing us to move forward and letting the citizens decide if they want to issue their jail. Also, at the same time, we thought it was wise to ask the question, do you want Sunday sales of alcohol in unincorporated Polon County? And that passed as well. Yes, so this board allowed the people to make that decision, so that does help take the place of, as far as tax revenue, maybe offsetting some property taxes and those type of things. Anything else you want to add? Mr. D?
Y'all have any questions, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you all so much, appreciate you.
Thank you. Public participation on the agenda items, no one signed up for that. I felt recognize Colonel Carmichael, our incoming chairman. And before you got here, we did make the announcement that today is a Marine birthday, 241 years, so thank you for your service.
Appreciate that. My son is just adopting a child early at the courthouse, that's where I live.
We can pass the bill. Pass the adoption day, so you can have it on a better day. Thank you. Cassette, agenda, we have 10 items. Number one, approve the extension contract services agreement for the Polon County kiosk program for a period of one year, and put that on our agenda. Approve amendment number two to extend Waterworks Group LLC contract through December 2018. That was the Tabitha inclusion. Approve purchase of replacement of proxy card reader software and hardware in the amount of $59,784.53. We've had failure of equipment, this was what I think we could consider an emergency-type purchase. Number four, adopt resolution 16-50, reappointing Ben Amerson to the Polon County Tax Assistance Board for a term beginning January 1, 2017, and then in December 31, 2019. Number five, approve annual contract with Southeastern Resource Group in the amount of $36,000. This is a group that we've been using, and Tabitha's brought that forward. Number six, accept the following subdivision streets for perpetual maintenance, Harmony Grove Estates, that's post four, Grove Drive, the Creek, the Potter Hills, Phase 1, Unit C, post four, Lanier Ridge, and Fairway Drive. Number seven, Alcohol License Review Board, reappoint with a term ending 12/31/18, Tommy Morris, Kevin Sullivan, Matthew J. Rangle. Number eight, reappoint Captain Kevin New to the Northwest Georgia Region One Emergency Medical Services Coordinating Council with a term ending 12/31/18. Reappoint Bruce Coyle to the Rolling Hills Resource Conservation and Development Council with a term ending 12/31/18. I think Bruce has been with us, are you in the room?
Yes.
How many years have you been with us in Polon County?
30 years.
30 years. Thank you, let's get moving. Number 10, the zoning board of Fields, reappoint with a term ending 12/31/17, Lamar Clark, chairman nominee, post one vacant. Number two, Jack Park. Number three, George, or post three, George Hill, and post four, Ronnie Kibbins. Would you like to move any of these items to the reception? Here it is done, we'll move forward. No old business under new business, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement in the amount of $82,527 with Walton Development and Management Incorporated to complete the left and right turn lane, interest improvements on Dabs Bridge Road at Lost Creek subdivision. This is the county right of way, and Scott Green. Scott, also, I've asked you questions on Dabs Bridge, if you can give us some update there.
Yes, sir. As you know, we are paving Dabs Bridge Road right now, and on that road is a large development that was left incomplete by a previous owner. We approached Walton Development to offer them our pricing with CW Matthews to complete their entrance, so that we can have a seamless project and activate the turn lane and extra room they provided out there originally. And we already have the money in the bank, and we'd like to move forward with your approval.
Okay. Be quick. Also, just to answer your question about Dabs Bridge Road, we are 10% into the largest paving contract ever in Polon County's history that I'm aware of. 7.7 million dollar project covering 35 miles of paving. Dabs Bridge Road has been initially patched and leveled, and our crews are now working on Ridge Road, doing the patching there. CW Matthews won this project, and we gave them until May 31, I believe, to complete the work. And that gave us the best pricing, so I just want to let everybody know that there will be work going on until the weather prevents it from working, from them working, and then they will resume in the spring to complete this work. Some people think, well, when they patched and leveled Dabs Bridge Road, we were done. That's just maybe 30% into the project. And if the weather allows, they might continue on, or they may have to pick it up in the spring. But we think, even though that is an incomplete project, it's going to be better than the potholes that everybody's been dealing with. And the kind of the scheme they've used is to get around to do the worst, or take care of the worst problems first before they finish a road. There's a trade-off with that, obviously. It'd be nice to finish one or two roads, and then everybody can enjoy that, but then it's going to leave other roads that are not patched. So I think that gave us the best pricing, and it's going to get, gets the best overall result and price for the citizens.
You and I, Bartow County and Cobb County have worked on Third Army, and that looks like it's still in progress. Dabs Bridge Road, if you know, goes completely across, ties into Cobb County and what's the name of the short road there?
Third Army Road.
Well, the road.
Sorry. Black Lake Road, yes.
And then there's plans to go across Highway 41 and into Third Army, we'll talk about that just.
Certainly. Cobb County has been pursuing this project with our mostly encouragement. They have proceeded through an environmental document and some preliminary design on that project, looking to provide an interchange that would serve Highway 92, Cedar Crest Road, and Dabs Bridge Roads. That will all be widened someday, and it's going to be a lot of traffic arriving at 41 with not a great route to get on the interstate. Acworth, 92 through Acworth is only going to be widened to four lane, and it just can't handle all the traffic. So we were looking as a great way to provide better access to the interstate, as well as take care of all the growth and the traffic on those roads. Cobb, it has addressed some comments with GOD, and we're waiting for a response back on that. The next step would be to go into final design. A lot of things have to happen before that project would actually get approved and get to right of way and be, have some certainty. So we're going to continue to work on that as a long-range effort, but some things have to happen in the next six months to 12 months to make sure that project is able to continue. We'll be meeting with GOD in Cobb County on that, to try to look forward.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Number two, discuss action to adopt resolution 16-47 with the adoption of an ordinance. Amend the code of ordinances for Polon County, Georgia, amend in chapter 18, article 40 3, Division 1, Section 18-71, and a regard to schedule of permit fees and building permit valuations. Ann Lindman and Tabitha Book will help with this.
Thank you, and good morning, gentlemen. We have not updated our building permit fees since 1998, and with this year's budget here, I made that one of the department's goals is to look at that and with the assistance of Tabitha and the finance department. We reviewed some of our surrounding jurisdictions. Cobb and Carroll have both recently in past year raised their fees, and Douglas and Bartow are considering, I think Bartow's working on it right now, Douglas wants to do it in their next fiscal year. We did a review and we have come to a recommendation to use the International Code Council Building Valuation Data to change, those numbers are already being used for our non-residential permits, but we'd like to use those for our residential permits as well. Just a few statistics for you. In 2012, we only issued 123 single-family permits, and as of October 31, in 2016, we have issued 1,079. One permit generates about eight inspections, so in 2012, we had two inspectors, and today we have four. And with building permits increasing, we will need that, and we also needed another permit tech. So we proposed this system of using the building valuation data, and it's something that Tabitha and I will review every year during the budget process to determine if our permit fees need to be adjusted. And the ultimate goal is to completely fund the community development department with the building permit fees.
Any questions, Ryan? I appreciate your work, and we've also spent quite a bit of time with y'all and had that opportunity, and so I appreciate what y'all have done, and all of everybody to get us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number three, discuss action to adopt resolution 16-48, authorize the following application with Georgia Department of Transportation, United States Department of Transportation for grant for assistance under Section 5311, the federal statute laws under Chapter 53 of Title 49 of the United States Constitution.
I apologize for not being so wordy. The, this is a grant for the transit buses that operate out of the Seaver Center. So these transit buses provide medical, shopping, any kind of transport, any kind of transportation that a citizen needs. If they don't have it, they can call me and they do ask, they can call in 24 hours in advance to request, and as long as space is available on those buses, they'll, they'll be the rest of the combination. We do receive a federal grant for this up until last year, and this application that we're filing is in request of 100 and, the total cost of program is $337,867. It is intended to, and that does replace one bus, so the operational is about $1.44,000 of that. It's a 50-50 grant, so we pay 50% and it's the application that we're sending you. However, a couple of years ago, based on the 2010 census, we were determined to be a more urban community, that, county than a rural county, so that reduced our, what we were eligible for in the 5311 grant. So given we're going to apply for the $144,000, but they're only likely to approve about $60,000 of that if last year's immunization. So unless you have any questions.
Questions? I've heard so many people that use that system, it's, it's amazing. They're here, and they don't have children or a family to help them, this is just a fabulous program. They get to Seaver Center, they get to the grocery store, they get to Doctor's Forum, this is, this is, it is great. Actually had a, a family that I talked to, it's been a year now, that decided whether they were going to move into Cobb or into Polon in certain area, and Cobb provides it also, but they actually decided to move into Polon because they have a family member that needed to be able to use those buses. And so they decided, well, we can't consider Polon. So that was, that was kind of the, as far as time that's happened.
Those are good points, too.
Thank you, Tom. Number four, discuss action to approve landfill tipping fee at $50 per ton and change the minimum tonnage allowed in the current $10 minimum to 400 pounds. Bruce and Tabitha and Tommy Leonard and all of us have worked on this. If you spend a Saturday trying to carry the garbage to our landfill, you'll, you'll find a huge, huge backup. So I've asked Bruce to study a way to, by nature, he's an engineer, to study a better route to get trucks to bypass so that once they need to be weighed, can be weighed, and fix the feed that can help us sustain ourselves, very much like Dan was talking about with the feeds, to sustain community development. Bruce, thank you.
Mr. Coyle, could I interrupt you for a second? And I apologize to you. On this particular subject, I don't, I don't feel like our commissioners are ready to discuss it at this time because of some other things that have come up. And I was on the phone with each of the post commissioners last night, and we discussed it, we've talked to some other folks in the citizen, in the citizen, in the county, the citizens in the county, and we, we really are at a point where we think we need a little more time. And this afternoon, if it's on the agenda, we, we really are going to propose to table it, and we would like to sit down with you and Tommy a little bit more, and I didn't know if we really needed to get in the weeds of this today, I guess is what I'm saying. We just feel like we need a little bit more time, and some other things have come up, and we've kind of went several different directions with it. So if the commissioners still want to hear from you this morning, that's fine. And again, I apologize, I don't mean anything towards you. I just feel like some things come up at the last minute, and we're not really prepared to discuss it, don't mean that we, don't know that we need to at this time, but that'll be up to everybody else up here.
I didn't get that called, so, you know, I'm sorry I wasted your time. Well, I'm sorry.
I, I already apologized, Mr. Coyle. And just think, several things came up, and I think it would be the best interest for everybody if we just kind of hold off on it at this point. I think I'll just bring up more questions as we head into this.
Well, this is the work session, so you're formulating your agenda. However, it would make more sense if you want to table it, to table it, it too, since it's already printed.
And I guess my point was, I didn't want to bring up any more questions out of it at this point until we had an opportunity to do some more talking. And that's everybody, you, Tommy, everybody, if that makes sense.
And it's hard to get together with y'all because, you know, I see two of y'all at a time.
Right. So we're going to, we're going to commit to being able to do that. Hopefully, we can see you back for the 1st of December.
Uh-huh.
If that sounds good. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you so much, Bruce.
Thank you.
Number five, discuss action to approve intergovernmental contract with the Georgia Department of Corrections to purchase furniture for the 911 Center at the amount of $88,000.
There's a lot of these systems, so, and this is one of them. The furniture, the existing furniture that's at the 911 Center has been there since before the 911 Center was built. So they utilized a lot of the, what was, what, what was already there and has been there for years. Some of it will not sustain the move, so it's a given that a lot of that furniture will fall apart when you move it out of that building. The sheriff's office for now, I think they plan to utilize some of that facility to expand some of their operations, so we will be not, we will still be using it, it just will not be in the 911 facility. A couple of months ago, Joey Pelf, and in addition to that, if you're going to have an AMA, we don't currently have an AMA, so we don't have some of the fixtures that were needed to accommodate that space as well. Several months ago, Joey Pelf, our chief, Joey Pelfrey and Dave Mufford approached a vendor to get an idea of what the cost was going to be. That vendor came back with something that was well in excess of $100,000, so they wanted to try to bring that budget down. Then in speaking with other 911 offices and agencies, they came, they discovered that the Georgia correctional industry builds quality office furniture. So they went to visit the facility and to see the quality of that furniture, they were very satisfied with that quality, they received a quote, and a quote for the furniture's $88,000 in revenue. That accommodates about 20 different spaces, so it's quite a bit of furniture for that one.
So it's built by inmates?
It is, it's built by inmates.
Wow.
They build the chairs, they build, oh, and they warranty their, their products as well.
That's pretty amazing, because I guess they come out of a person with skill where they do that job.
Right. And it's, and it's at a very competitive price, and the DOA's, DOA's purchasing guidelines, as I mentioned, you know, the first one they got was in excess of $100,000, and the, the law allows us to partner, if you will, with other intergovernmental agencies without the competitive. What we generally do is go to state contract, have a provider on the state contract, price this furniture for us, and we'll break that back to you. But this allows us to, um, to, this will allow us to partner with Georgia Correctional Industries, and they'll build the furniture and we don't have to, it doesn't require that you can go visit and complete the process. It's excluded.
The, the first vendor that we approached was on the state contract, and their state contract pricing was actually in excess of $275,000 for that, for the furniture in that building. And Georgia Correctional Industries made us a proposal for $108,000, their first proposal, and then we were able to go back in and work with them and get that down to $88,000. And that does outfit the entire building, every office, every public area, the breakrooms, the bunk rooms, everything except that dispatch furniture that we discussed earlier. And it includes custom-built conference tables for the emergency operations center, which Chief Pelfrey, we couldn't find any that met his requirements, so Georgia Correctional Industries actually built us a mock-up table, had it shipped to Decatur, we went over and viewed it, and it was, it's what he needs, and they're going to custom-build that furniture for our EOC.
Outstanding.
We're, we're very, very happy with the quality of the furniture and the price. They do use inmate labor to actually install the furniture, so it'll be delivered, they'll bring inmates out to help install it, and it's all fabricated, everything they build is fabricated, including the prison.
Any questions for Dave or Tabitha?
Thank you both. I think that's outstanding.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of our regular business session. We don't have anyone asking to speak. We do have executive session for litigation and pending litigation, so if you're open to stay for us to return, I'm not sure how long that'll take, but there'll be no other business conducted after we, we enter the room. So do I hear a motion to go into executive session for litigation and potential litigation?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for litigation, potential litigation. I would like to add personnel just in case I needed it. Please.
Thank you. Most can say to me the other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
My fault. Yes, me too. I'm sorry.
I know. I will.
Bye-bye.
We're going to have a chance to, yes, I want you to speak.
We are back in an open session, no action taken in closed session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.